Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 8th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll move on to the real call members. Matt Kirk, recall real, please.
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
There.
John Copeland is absent this evening. Brent Wheat.
Present.
Ciara Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Move on to the approval of minutes for previous meetings. We have minutes from July 11th. Couple tonight. We have June 13th, July 11th, and July 25th. So were there any changes to any of those minutes?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes for July 13th, July 11th, and July 25th.
Can you amend to say June 13th?
June 13th.
Okay. We have a motion approved. Is there a second? I think it was Brent. All those say aye?
Aye.
Disposed. All right, minutes are approved. All right, first up, it's old business. I don't have anything on my agenda. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay. New business then. First item up is a food and beverage request for the Back to the 50s. Councilwoman Messenger, this is your presentation.
Um, I think we have.
Carmen?
Yeah, Carmen is here to give the presentation or a representation, someone representative.
I'm Barbara Belt. I'm representing the Back to the 50s Committee, and we are here today to request $1,500 for facility expenses. Most of that will be to cover the tent that will cover all of the bands all Friday night and all day Saturday. Thank you so much.
Any, go ahead.
If you're from Lebanon, you guys know the Back to the 50s Festival is kind of a staple here. Um, sorry, can't hear. A lot of our patrons come and enjoy. It's a good event for the community to go to. Not only do they have, I think last year they had 180 cars that had registered. They also have activities for kids to come to. So I know there's bounce houses. There's a magician that's come, or that comes. There's bounce houses, all sorts of fun activities for everybody and all the family to come and enjoy. So I think we met with our food and beverage committee and we had a positive recommendation to approve the 1,500 for them.
Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion then concerning the food and beverage request?
Make a motion.
We approve?
Yep.
We have a motion to approve the $1,500 request for the Back to the 50s organization. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Morse. All those say aye?
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Can you remind us when the dates are just for?
Seventeen, or 16th and 17th of September.
Perfect.
We're also having a fundraiser. If anybody wants flyers, we'll send them over here on the table. This Thursday, City Barbecue. If y'all going to have lunch or dinner anytime all day, get your money back to us.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, next up is a food and beverage request for the Lincoln Days. Jane Hammack?
For those of you that don't know, I am Jane Hammack. I'm with the Boone County Historical Society. We've put on the Lincoln's Lubdan now for, I think it's 14 years. I got confused during COVID when we lost the year. I put our save the date brochure at your place, just so you know what's going on. It is September 24th and 25th this year. We have a full lineup of events on Saturday and Sunday both. I just received confirmation today that we will have six cannons. So yes, I will be telling you on golf course that the cannons are going off. And this year, the Confederates are also bringing mortars, which will be kind of fun. We are the third event in a row, so our soldier numbers may be down because with gas, a lot of these guys just can't travel this far. And hauling a cannon with a diesel truck, it's kind of expensive. So I am surprised that we have the six cannons. A lot of our guys show up on Friday to set up. They do eat here in town, and a lot of them before they leave on Sunday will eat here in town. We do give the opportunity to local vendors to sell their wares at no cost. Zona uses the shelter house to supply our meals, and we do not charge them anything. And so it's also a fundraiser then for the Zona Club. I hope you've all been there before. It is a big event. It's one of the few free events in town that we have. It's educational. The premise of the event is, as you all know, the Lincoln sign by Jimmy Johns. On his way to inauguration on February 3rd, 1861, Lincoln spoke off the back of his car to the people of Lebanon. He also stopped in Zeinsville. Our premise is, what if he'd gotten off that train, walked to a field on the north side of town, which later became Memorial Park, and spent two days with the citizen, citizenry of Lebanon? And if you've ever been to a Lincoln event, our Mr. Lincoln, when he gets out of his car at that Jimmy Johns, all weekend he is Lincoln. If you walk up to him with a cell phone, he'll go, what's that strange object in your hand? But he, I mean, he's almost creepy because he is so Lincoln-y. Three years ago, he had a flat tire on the way here, and he said, there's nothing more exciting than to see the AAA guy walk up to your car and you get out dressed as Lincoln. So we had to tell everybody that Lincoln's horse threw a shoe, which was why he was two hours late. But we really appreciate any support you can give us. We will use your money for advertising. So as soon as we get this money, we'll start putting out our real posters around town and getting the schedules out. But we really appreciate the support you've given us over the years.
Any questions for Jane?
No, sir.
Excuse me. We met with Jane, and she did a wonderful job of explaining this. Like I said, I just want to reiterate, it's September 24, 25, at Memorial Park. They do a really good job of not impacting city services, even down to they empty their own trash. And I've spoken with John Messenger, and they don't have any problem with this group. So we have made a recommendation that they receive $1,500 from food and beverage. I will say, I'm, after I've explained all that, my beloved wife is the treasurer of the Historical Society, so I will abstain from this vote in the interest of preventing a second civil war, just in case the council decides not to give the money.
We don't want a conflict of interest to show up anywhere. So.
Yeah.
But I must admit, Brent's also been a supporter of us. He helps with the cannons that day for his gun magazine. So that's also very impressive. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Make a motion. We approve $1,500 to Lincoln Days.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morse. All those say aye?
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. Thank you very much. We'll see you in September. All right, next up is a food and beverage request for the downtown power upgrades. Kevin slash Joe?
Jane, you will get us a letter. Thanks.
Thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the events downtown. You know, the events downtown, the downtown, the square in general has really seen a great amount of tremendous growth in the last few years. And, you know, we can't thank the city and all its various entities for the money that was invested in there that has spurred a lot of other private investment. So events are a key point, program in this space, or a key point of making this the place to be, making this the heart of our community. And what we're seeing is, as events grow, we're having trouble accommodating the events from an electrical standpoint. So if you look at this image here, sorry, the glare is kind of hard to get away from. Maybe there we go. This is Meridian Street. And what we did when we built the project, we have receptacles, standard 20 amp receptacles like you would have in your home, on all the, on all the light poles. At the bottom for event use, at the top for Christmas lights. And then at these three stars, we have larger, call them RV receptacles, where we can, we can pull out a portable 50 amp panel and plug that into a separate series of circuits, separate series of outlets, and we can have more power for larger events, things that you might power up with. That would be like food trucks, or stages, or, those are primarily the things we see used. Then we have another system underlying that that can provide 200 amp service at the corner of Washington and Meridian, near the jail, as well as we can provide that same 200 amp service near the plaza on Meridian Street. We use those for large stage events that need a lot of light, a lot of sound, things of that nature. So we've got a really good system on Meridian Street. What we're seeing as we go, as the events grow and get bigger, and we're bringing in more food trucks, more vendors, game facilities, all kinds of different vendors that are coming in that need more power, as you get away from Meridian Street, all we really have are the 20 amp receptacles on the poles. And we've been doing the best we can on running extension cords across the street and doing what we can, bringing in generators to power up all those vendors as those events have grown. But if we had it to do over again, we would have put more, more power, more circuiting on those streets for the events. But as it is a good problem to have, the events have grown larger than what we anticipated. So what we're really proposing on the map here is the red Xs. We want to add more of those 50 amp receptacles so that we can bring in those temporary festival power distribution boxes for those events. The good thing is, is that at least we thought through this previously, and we have conduits at all these locations. So all those conduits run back to the electrical control panels that we installed in the alleys, and all those electrical control panels have ample room for expanding those, those, those electrical systems, those circuit breaker systems, to provide more power. So what we're asking for tonight is, is a grant from food and beverage for $14,509 to basically upgrade and expand our electrical system. So we would be adding four additional receptacle locations, as we talked about. We would be adding those distribution, festival distribution panels at those four locations. We would also then be buying some heavy duty extension cords so that we can move those festival distribution panels around the street as we need to. And then the other thing that we're doing, I mentioned the 200 amp main stage panels. Right now, when we bring that in for a large event, we pay roughly $200 per event to have an electrician hook up that panel, because it's just not something that can be safely hooked up by a layperson. So with this, the $14,509, that would upgrade those, those main stage panels so that we can plug and play with those things, so that a layperson like myself, or Joe, or any of our volunteers could install that panel without having to bring in an electrician every time we want to hook it up. So that's what we're asking for here. The events have expanded, and we want to be able to keep up with that without having to struggle and stretching extension cords and getting help from local businesses or from our friends at the courthouse to power up some of these vendors. We want to expand our electrical system so that we can better accommodate these larger events. So we're asking for a food and beverage grant of $14,509 to execute the plan that I just presented to you.
How many years will that last?
Really, I mean, I think this would be enough power that really we could accommodate, accommodate event as large as the space will hold. So I don't think this is something where in a few years, we're going to need even more circuits. I think this really would be the end of that. This is really just expanding the Meridian Street system to Maine and Washington. So then if you're asking about like, how long will this electrical equipment last before it needs to be replaced? I mean, that's, that's a good question. I don't know that I'm necessarily equipped to answer that. I mean, I would think these electrical systems barring some sort of damage, if we're just talking about how long do they wait, how long do they last before they wear out? I mean, we've got to be talking about at least 20 to 30, 40 years. I don't, I'm afraid I can't answer that.
So you spend $14,000, you get 20 years life out of it?
At least. You know, I mean, I upgraded my house electrical system in, in the last 10 years, and previously it hadn't been done since the 1950s probably.
So that's, that's about $1,400 a year.
Correct.
Yeah.
And right now, at least three events a year, is that right?
Yeah.
Three events a year, we're paying $200 to hook up the stage panel. We wouldn't have to pay that anymore. So there, that saves us $600 a year just in having this system modified so that it can be truly plug and play.
Kevin, did you say the 50 amps are permanent and the 200 amps are portable? Is that what you said?
Uh, really, all of them are portable. So we have, we have 50 amp receptacles. They look like, if you were, if you, if you're a camper, have you ever seen the RV connections that you might plug a camper into at an RV?
Yeah.
We have those. They're kind of concealed, but on the bottom of light poles in three locations now, we have those on Meridian Street.
Yeah.
What this would be, would be to add four more of those that would actually be underground in, in underground vaults that we have at those four red X locations. So we would open the lid on that box and then plug in our festival panel down into the vault for, for those connections.
Because I, what I was just going to suggest is that the portables, that if those are truly portables, that's what is wear and tear. So if you take care of things like that, they last a long time. But the other, if you have to keep doing it on and off, so that's.
That's a good point, yes. The, the electrical system doesn't take much wear and tear. The portables that are, that are drug around primarily by, by Joe, myself, some other volunteers, the heart of Lebanon is frequently responsible for moving those portable panels out. They're built sturdy, and they're on stanchions. They're, they're not light, you know, so they don't get blown around by the weather. But, but it, but they do require some care in those. But they're relatively simple in terms of the electrical circuiting that's involved.
I had never thought about this till this very moment, but when you're, you know, if you're talking a hot dog warmer plugged into the base of a light pole, it's no big deal. But if you're talking a 200 amp stage with lights and a couple of food trucks, is the city just donating this electricity, or is there some accounting for that?
So all of the downtown electrical system is, is metered. So we are paying an electric bill. I, I don't know, Tanya, if you'd be prepared to speak to what the downtown electrical bills run.
I look at 50 amp a month.
Right, yeah. But there's at least an accounting.
Absolutely.
Of electricity, okay.
Yes. And when we've had private events that have needed that main stage power, that 200 amp, we have sent that bill to the private event holders.
That's the answer I wanted.
There you go. But, you know, for things like Oktoberfest, for things like.
Summerfest.
Summerfest, Savor Lebanon, those are the three main events that are really grown beyond the Meridian Street space that we're trying to accommodate, and those costs are all bore by the city.
Okay.
Is there anywhere where the utilities can help you out in any way of doing things, or have you asked, or?
I, I did not ask.
I mean, I, and I'm just thinking, I don't know why the utilities, electric side couldn't help you out doing something and.
Happy to have those conversations.
Hooking up or whatever, you know, I don't.
Yeah. I mean, we have asked about the electrical panel for the stage, and typically that's just not something, I mean, certainly their linemen are qualified to do it, but they're also responsible for a lot of other things, and bringing them out to help us set up power for an event is not always at the top of their priority list. And a lot of times, those are things that need to happen on a weekend as well, when they're, when they're not, not on, on the clock, so to speak.
Any additional questions or comments?
No, sir.
We're, a question, these cords, where, where do you keep these extension cords and things like that? Where will they be kept?
Right now, the every, all the electrical equipment we have today is kept in a storage facility that is downtown, that is, is paid for by the heart of Lebanon.
Okay.
Are these, are these portable units used anywhere else besides downtown?
Inside our city? No, no. Are they standard equipment that are, really, they look exactly like RV equipment that you'd see at a campground? So it's, it's, they're established pieces of equipment. But we, we don't have the ability to plug these event panels in at any other location. That's certainly something that we could look into because we, we hold, we hold the equipment. But right now, I don't, we don't have any other, you know, 50 amp twist lock connections that we could take to, say, the park, Memorial Park or Admiral Longley. But that's something that would.
I would think for the investment, that's probably a good idea to look into because it's just a plug in on the other end.
Yeah.
If it makes us more portable, it would make sense spending this much money to keep it other places if we needed it.
I think as we talk about additional facilities in our parks, that's something that we, we have this in our back pocket, that we can then, we could use them for events in the park or events.
Yep.
And somewhere else as well.
Go back to your map a minute.
Uh, sure.
I remember one time you had a band or a stage or something down at the intersection there of Maine and Meridian.
Yes.
Do you continue to plan to have a stage in that area, and do you have enough power source?
A lot of times that event, that is.
I see the groups are there now, so.
That's typically Oktoberfest that sets up there, and maybe Joe can speak to the organizers of that, but they provide the stage and they provide the power for the stage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Through a grant, the CDB, it's part of their summer concert series. And so they, as Kevin said, they, they pay for the band, they pay for the audio, and they insist on a generator as a backup. They've, they've been burned in the past in, in other communities, and so they, they have a standard quiet generator that they use and they prefer, even when we've talked about having it at the Washington and Meridian intersection, where it is robust power. We've used it for Summerfest, we've used it for other events as well. They've elected to know, we'll play it safe and have a generator that, to them, is a bit more reliable.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Would then entertain a motion then concerning the downtown power upgrades grant request?
I make a motion. We approve the money.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second from Brent?
That's $14,509, correct.
Motion second. All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That request is approved.
Just one more, one, one comment about, you know, the food and beverage money was, the major reason for that money is for it to be used on infrastructure and city, things like that. But we do like doing the grant programs for Back to the 50s and Lincoln Days and so forth too. So just want to make that public comment.
Thank you, Mike. Well said.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Next item up is ordinance 2022-20, council to establish non-reverting fund for collection of planning department fees. This is ordinance on first reading. I'll turn it over to Ben to introduce.
Evening, council members. This may seem like a fairly straightforward request for non-reverting fund, but it's one I'm very excited about. If you may recall back, I think it was in May, during a work session, we talked about this initiative that the planning department would like to do, using planning department fees to reinvest into our neighborhoods. And so this is a culmination of an effort to figure out exactly the best way to get this set up. We decided, working with the clerk treasurer's office, made, in the direction was to set up a new non-reverting fund for collection of the planning department fees. As I mentioned, what, what we're, what this would do then is right now, the fees we collect, and this would include anything for building permits, petitions for plan commission BZA, those fees right now are directed to the general fund. What we'd like to do with this non-reverting fund is redirect those fees to this non-reverting fund that will allow us then to take essentially the fees that are paid by development and reinvestment into our existing neighborhoods and other community development efforts. We probably collect in any given year between 50 and 150 to $200,000 in fees over the course of the year. And I don't know if I'm subtracting out of the fees that go to another fund. So what this wouldn't do is road and park impact fees, they have a fund they go to already. And I'm not talking about those fees. Storm water review fees, those go to a specific fund. Right away permit fees, those already have a specific fund that's designated for. So we're not talking about redirecting any of those fees to this account. This would just be everything that's left over from those that already have an existing fund that they go to. But what we'd like to do is, is create some additional neighborhood and community development programming that we're not able to do now by using the permit fees from development to do so. And some of the ideas we have, and I was talking with Dick a little bit before this meeting, or what, you know, what are we thinking about? So a couple of things that we, as we're kind of brainstorming, starting to put together, of course, it's going to depend on how, as we collect funds, what level we have as to how much we can do and when. But some of the ideas we've had, first and foremost, our code enforcement efforts, we will have some, some efforts that we need to do related to either acquisition of properties and/or demolition of properties. Our code enforcement non-reverting fund, right now has about $7,000 in it, and we haven't collected any money yet this year from, from liens. And so $7,000 doesn't even cover the cost of one demolition. I've already got one on our plate right now that we were just discussing with city attorney earlier tonight, that the lowest bid I've got is about $11,000, and it's for a small little home. So most of the demolitions of homes are probably going to be between 10 and $20,000. And we've got a list of properties right now going through our unsafe building process. We could have a number of them that will be up for demolition in the next six to 12 months. So this will help kind of bolster that program and allow us to do that. From that same perspective, on code enforcement, a lot of times we'll have properties that have been abandoned, that are unsafe, they're, they're not secure. So we need to be able to send a contractor out to board up doors and windows and secure foundations and things like that. It's not something we're equipped to do within the department to do it ourselves. So we'll need to be able to hire a contractor to do that, and that does, that does cost money as well. We do, again, we have that $7,000 that's not going to go very far. So this is just really going to kind of boost some of our code enforcement efforts on the back end. But some of the more exciting things that we're doing, again, related to code enforcement, it kind of grew out of that, and in partnership with the county, we held a dumpster day a couple of months ago in the southeast part of the community, and it was extremely successful. We had a couple of, was it 30 yard dumpsters, Matt? A couple of 30 yard dumpsters we put down at Admiral, at the Hot Pond Park. And we were scheduled to be out there from 8 to 12. The first person showed up at 7:00 AM in the morning before we were even technically open yet, and we were pretty well full by 11 o'clock. And so everybody was always, asked us when we were going to do the next one. It was really beneficial, and it really achieved a lot of the goals we're hoping. A lot of the stuff I saw were things that were clearly sitting in somebody's yard for a really long time. So I was glad to see some of those, that junk and trash get thrown away in the dumpsters. I certainly know our new trash service for the city has a heavy haul day, at least heavy trash one time a month. But this allows people to bring some, a number of large items out that may be difficult to put out in the heavy trash pickup. So we're hoping to be able to repeat that and kind of move it around the community throughout the course of the year, and hopefully do at least one a quarter. And if they continue to remain popular, we can always build on that. So that's another idea we've had to kind of build on some of those other programs like that. Another thing we're looking, I know we talked about this at the work session, is we've talked with Habitat for Humanity about some of their programming that they do in neighborhoods. They got two such efforts that I would really like to boost in Lebanon. The first one is what they call their repair program. What they really try to do is identify, say, a block where they can go out and over the course of a day, really do some really basic cleanup and repair on as many homes on the block as they can get to participate in the program on that day. Some of that may just be cutting grass and trimming back shrubs and really just kind of doing some basic maintenance out there. Sometimes it may involve power washing siding, doing some basic painting on a porch, things like that, really just to help, just really just spit shy in the fronts of the houses a little bit, really makes that neighborhood just look that much better, just with a, basically a one day effort. They indicated to me that their total budget for the entire county in any given year is $5,000. So what I really. So what I'd really like to do is boost that repair program and give them at least $5,000, if not maybe $10,000 or $15,000 just for the city of Lebanon and really try to hit up some of the, our neighborhoods that are really challenged right now. Again, we're talking in the redevelopment, how can we help the neighborhoods? This is a way I think we can, we can start boosting our neighborhoods and really giving some, putting some efforts in there. And coupled with that, one thing Habitat mentioned is, is some of the homes they look at and just doing some of these basic cleanup and repair, they have a larger issue. One home that they talked about in our meeting with them was it's an elderly couple. They really can't get up and down the sidewalk anymore because the sidewalk's broken up. One of them's got a walker. They just can't navigate from their house to the street anymore. And they'd really like to pour them a new sidewalk, but it's going to cost about $3,000. And Habitat for Humanity, every time something like that comes up, they have to go search for grants and it may take them several months to get it done. So what I'd like to do is work with them to identify rehab efforts on some of these homes where we would come in and do what I would call a forgivable loan program for owner occupied housing effort, where they, they would essentially work with Habitat to identify the project. And then we would help with the funding on the backend so that Habitat could get it done. The reason I like the idea of partnering with Habitat is because they have a lot of contractors and suppliers that give them discounts that they would offer to the city. So like one example, they said is they, they have a roofing contractor they work with that gets supplies for no cost. And then they also discount their services by 50%. So they can often do a roof that would typically cost 15 and $20,000 for between, closer to $5,000 to $7,000 is their cost. So whereas it would cost me $20,000 to do one, I could do three of them at the same cost if we worked with Habitat. So I think that's something that, again, helping to secure some of these homes. We worked a couple of years ago with an older gentleman that didn't have the means. His house leaked like a sieve. And something like this would have been a huge benefit for him, working with Habitat to identify the need. And then the city be able to back that up with this owner occupied rehab program. The reason I like the forgivable loan program is that, one, we're going to identify that it is an owner occupied house. We're not going to help the landlords with their rentals. Owner occupied house and what it would do is we say, say it's a three-year forgivable loan program. Each year we would forgive a third of that loan that we offered to them. So as long as they remain in the home for a certain period of time, we will over time forgive that loan. It would become a grant essentially. If they choose to move out after a year, then they'd have to pay back the portion that wasn't forgiven at that time. So I think it could be, between those two things, I think we can really build some of our neighborhoods up. And I think Habitat's really excited about this opportunity. They have hundreds of volunteers that they have access to. Again, as Joe and I talk about trying to get volunteers for some stuff that the city does, if we can get a handful of them, it's pretty great. But if they have a repair program day, they could have 80 people show up to help out and really knock out a lot of, a lot of things at a very low cost and very efficiently. Other things we've talked about internally and also with Joe, because I know he's got a big, some big ideas about trying to boost neighborhoods as well and trying to, first, you know, when we did the comp plan a couple of years ago, we identified neighborhoods in the community. And this is more than just, you know, a development that has, you know, like Chadwick, a name. This is about identifying areas of the downtown that right now don't really have much of identity. Kind of create this area that would become a neighborhood and hopefully bring the people together, create an identity for them. There's things we do to boost that, like create some unique signage to identify the area, other neighborhood beautification efforts. We talked about even relating, get back to code enforcement, some of these neighborhoods we own a lot because we bought a lot, tore down houses in bad shape. And now in some cases, you can't use them to build a home because they're in floodway or flood plain. So what do we do with that? So there may be some opportunities for us to do some beautification there. Community garden or something that the neighborhood might, might see as a benefit to their neighborhood, as a public space where they can gather. So there's some things there that we're kind of, we're just kind of starting to figure out what those things might look like. So that, yeah, it's a big thing, you know, we're talking about helping the square in downtown with a redevelopment commission with the, with the TIF funding because the TIF funding can be used for those, for the commercial businesses. But how do we help the neighborhoods and the homeowners? And I think this is a program, you know, as we develop these programs, something we could really push out there that would help homeowners and owner occupied homes in our communities and our neighborhoods. So those are some of just the ideas we have at this point. The way this is set up is it specifically indicates in the ordinance that the, the funds would be used for neighborhood and community development programming and initiatives. So it's a fairly broad description of what the, kind of the guardrails are for how this can be used. So it allows us as we develop new programs, there's some flexibility designed there as long as we stay within those, those guardrails. We can develop new programs and be nimble with them and respond to opportunities as they come up. At the same time, creating some guardrails so we're just not just spending on any, any whim that we have at any given time. So again, this is a new non-reverting fund, just to kind of finalize this to set up. Allows us to redirect those fees that we collect from development and then reinvest them into our existing neighborhoods and help our, help our folks that live in the community. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. I know in the email I'd sent last week, we've got some fee collection coming up that would actually really help boost this, this fund pretty quickly. So I would ask, I mean, certainly if it's the will of the council to suspend your rules and move on to second reading tonight so we can get it adopted tonight, assuming that everybody's comfortable with the ordinance as it written. And that will allow us to start collecting fees immediately and put them into this fund. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ben?
Yeah. You sold me when you started talking about code enforcement.
Uh huh.
I guess this is more of a comment you've addressed, there's really no clear guardrails here, but we have to trust that the money will be used in the right way. But just understand, I'm going to sound like a broken record. We need to deal with our code enforcement issues and some of the hard things we've not dealt with. And I mean, over decades before we start maybe planting gardens and things. So that was just the comment. Nothing against gardens, but I would like to see us really improve the quality of life in some of these neighborhoods. And we're going to talk about that next week during budget hearings. But that was, would be something that would be of big interest and emphasis for me personally.
100%, I agree. The, the first thing on my list that I wrote down tonight was code enforcement. That was the first reason why I felt like this, this fund should be set up. And as we grow the fund, we can grow into some of these other efforts, but, but code enforcement was the primary reason why we wanted to set this up.
Leveraging the relationship with Habitat is really genius.
Yeah, they had talked about these programs with me before and felt like it would be a huge benefit if we could somehow partner with them. But I think now with, with the possibility of having some funds that we can put into it to really kind of put their programs on steroids in Lebanon and kind of leverage their resources they already have available, I think will be huge for us because we could recreate the program, but it would cost us three times as much as it does Habitat. And then to try to develop the, the, the number of volunteers they could get, try to recreate that, it'd probably be impossible for us. So, so I think it's going to be a huge benefit for us to partner with them.
Really good.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It goes back to code enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
But I know it's on our end, it's about the judge.
Yeah.
We need to find out how we get one next year and then we put the code enforcement full bore.
So I can touch on that, Keith. Obviously, we've keep doing our dance, call it, with the county on that. So if that is something the city wants to move forward in, this actually is the year for us to adopt a, to reestablish the city court, if that's something this council chooses to do. We would adopt it in 2022. There would be an election in 2023. The court would then restart January 1, 2024. So if that's the direction and will this council, something we can do, but it's, it's a once every four year option essentially. So if that's what we want to do, that's something we need to.
We can't start until 24?
That'd be the earliest it could start, correct. But we would, we would vote on the establishment of it this year and then they would, we would elect a judge in 2023. And then we would, and then it would start in 2024.
Another thing that actually came out of our first meeting about our UDO update. Apparently some communities use their board of zoning appeals as appeals process for, for things like this. And I, we're going to investigate that further. There may be a short-term option where we can use the board of zoning appeals for this, for this as well. So I, I'm not as well versed on that, but our, our ordinance writer is familiar with some communities have used their BZA.
But BZA couldn't handle speeding tickets though or fireworks, things like that, right?
I don't know. I don't know how that is. I think it would have to be something written, written into the UDO. So if it were things that are in city code, not necessarily, but if there are things in the UDO, that they would be able to handle appeals on those. So, but we're, we're still learning a little bit more about that too.
I mean, I'm seeing more and more abandoned cars. I mean, they may have a license plate on them. I don't know how many of them are active. But we need to deal with them. I just saw pictures today of eight of them in one neighborhood, eight.
So we're going to write into our UDO, up to all of our property maintenance issues that are in city code and our UDO. We're going to make sure they're all in the UDO. So it makes it more uniform in terms of enforcement from our perspective. That would also allow the BZA to act as an appeals board for those, for those issues. So we might be able to, again, from the short term, be able to address this a little bit more effectively with our UDO that we're working on right now. 100% agree though. We need to make sure that it's uniform and easily enforceable.
And I hear you, Keith. I mean, the challenge is some individuals have learned the system, right? And they've learned what they have to do and can do and they move the car, it resets the clock, things like that, right? So there's some, I don't want to get into details with it, but it's, it's not as, it's not as easy to enforce some of those things as you think, as it probably should be.
No, but I can imagine we can write it to where we can do it right. Because, I mean, it's.
Well, having a city court makes it much easier, for sure. But trying to do that without a city court, it's, it's not a straightforward.
We've done a better job on one.
Yeah.
And when he gets enough price on them, guess what? They start mowing it. That's my whole.
Well, I think we've done a lot with code enforcement, but I think, you know, what Ben's proposing, I think this, this fund would allow us to do even more and not, and also give the opportunity to help maybe use some carrots as well instead of just sticks, right? So I think it could be a kind of a, an effort to do, to do both that would help us.
I think the big thing on fines and things like that we've talked about, we have to make sure they have the ability to appeal it somewhere. So making sure we've got that, that backup system in place before we start implementing fines is going to be important. So whether that's the board of zoning appeals, where they appeal the fine there, if it goes to the new city court, we just have to make sure that that structure's set up first. 100% agree with you though. We've talked about this a number of times.
I think we're all agree that we need to do something and we probably ought to discuss it a little more at budget time. You know, when we have budget next week and talk about the.
From a code enforcement standpoint?
Code enforcement and talk about the court, you know, because it's, I just know from talking to people that it's just not that easy as we like to think it is, you know, to even get it started. But we got a lot of things to think about than just a judge. So.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, we talk about that at budget time.
Well, I don't want to get too far down the weeds on this, but I have a question and since it's, it's up. If we send a crew down, whether it's contractor, city crew, whatever, to cut a yard because it's four feet tall or we end up demolishing a house, we can throw that, we can put a lien on the property, right?
Correct.
So as long as we got the money to pay for the crew to do whatever remediation needs done, that's for the owner to have to deal with and we've solved the problem. So.
So, so the challenge right now is most of the yards we end up cutting are abandoned. They're not paying the taxes. So that's why that code enforcement fund's not replenishing it like it used to. We're actually getting good compliance, particularly in the last couple of years on grass and weeds. But the ones where we're constantly going out and maintaining them are ones that they're abandoned. And so we're not, we're not recouping the money.
Or the owner passed away, right? So there's no, yeah, they don't care, they have a lien anymore, right? You know, so there's no, that's where we get that trick bag where.
But if we had money in a fund, we could at least get the yard cut.
Absolutely, absolutely. Right, right now we've been borrowing the street department for that and I think they would prefer if we didn't as often. So this would allow us to make sure we got a contractor lined up so that we can do it.
Well, as I said, I'm going to be a broken record. This has been something that has been on my agenda for a long time and I've been working on it the last couple of weeks. So we will discuss it.
Any further questions, comments?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Go ahead, Dick. Sorry, go ahead.
What was the average income you think that this would generate?
It depends, it depends on the year. I would say it probably averages out to about 100, maybe $150,000. It really depends. So the, the projects that pay the big fees are like the big industrial buildings. Because they pay per square foot charge.
Let's just say it's $100,000.
Yeah.
Okay, for discussion. Okay. Didn't hit me till you made that comment earlier. Well, that $100,000 is coming out of the general fund now, which is already helping to fund the planning department's budget anyway. So.
The rest hasn't.
Yeah, so just what I'm thinking is if we, if we approve this, and I don't think it's a bad thing, but if we approve it, we got to realize that we're going to be losing money in the general fund because that already goes to, to fund his budget. And so we got to think about kind of.
Does it though?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it does. It goes into general fund.
The general, the, the budget each year is based on tax, taxes collected, not fees collected. So, so we get a tax levy each year.
Fees collected are money that are taken in or those fees go into the general.
Well, it goes into the account, but they're not budgeted.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't count on fees to fund our departments, right? So it is a source of revenue and it goes into our.
That revenue goes into.
Correct. And so when you look at our balance, our general fund balance.
And when we put our budget together, that's all added up into revenue.
But, but the, but the budget is based on the tax levy each year, which is money we collect. It's not based on, it's not based on fees that are collected and deposited.
We have, we have that money in our, that comes into the general fund, okay? And when she adds up all the money.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why we have a very healthy general fund balance at the moment.
Exactly.
Correct. I mean, that's, that's why it's grown from a six months reserve to almost a full year reserve in our general fund.
I'm just saying that there's, going to have to watch where we take it out of. And you might have to give a little something else somewhere else thinking that you're going to use some of these funds for something else.
Okay.
We'll look at that. We'll look at that.
Further questions, discussion?
No, sir.
Does, is there a council will to suspend the rules tonight or do we want to just move, have first reading tonight?
Yes.
I, yes, to suspend the rules.
I'm always uncomfortable doing that unless there's a compelling need, but will of the board.
Again, the, Ben mentioned there's, there's a couple of filers that are coming in that will be significant. That would help kind of be the, a great seed money opportunity for this.
I'm okay with suspending the rules.
Okay. So we have a, actually, let's have, I'm going to have Rob read it first and then we'll do the, the motion. So.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-20 is an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for collection of planning department fees. Seduty and responsibility of this council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. This council is empowered to establish local funds for various governmental purposes. The Department of Planning and Zoning collect fees from applicants for various improvement location permits in petition as established in the Unified Development Ordinance, that's the UDO, in section 9.1 and by council ordinance 2019-03. The permanent fees collected by the Department of Planning and Zoning are currently deposited in the general fund for the city. Whereas this council desires to reinvest the permit fees into various Department of Planning and Zoning initiatives, such as including but not limited to neighborhood and community development programming. Whereas due to the cyclical and recurring nature of permit fee collection and neighborhood and community development efforts, the council has determined it is necessary to establish a non-reverting fund for the Department of Planning and Zoning to deposit permit fees. The council has determined the funds, fund proceeds may be utilized by the Department of Planning and Zoning on a recurring basis for various activities and expenses related to neighborhood and community development initiatives. Whereas the council now desires to establish a non-reverting Department of Planning and Zoning Fee Fund and Appropriation Line Item to provide for the collection and dispersments of revenue and appropriations as delineated above. Therefore, this council finds as follows. Section 1, the Establishment of Planning Department Fee Fund. The following fund revenue and appropriation line items are established. Planning Department Fee Fund Non-Reverting-2506. Planning Department Fee Revenue Non-Reverting-2506413. Planning Department Fee Appropriation Non-Reverting-2506001431. Section 2, the Purpose. Funds deposited in the Planning Department Fee Fund may be utilized by the Department of Planning and Zoning Administration for planning initiatives such as, but not limited to, neighborhood and community development programming. Section 3, the Planning Department Fee Fund shall be non-reverting such that the balance of the fund will carry over from year to year and be available to the Department of Planning and Zoning Administration as set forth herein. Effective date of this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Ben, or Rob, excuse me. Now, as we've read, any further discussions?
I want to say something really quick. I've met with Ben quite a few times and we've talked in length about all the things that they could benefit from this money. And I just want to say thank you, Ben, for putting the work in to get all this together. I'm really excited to see if this passes, all the things that, all the benefits the community will have from this. And you and your team, I just want to say thank you for working as hard as you guys have because I know that it's a lot to come up with all these ideas and to implement them and to do everything you guys do. So I just want to let you know, we see it. We see all the good work you're doing. And we've already seen, you know, positive impacts around the. seen, you know, positive impacts around the community from what you're doing, so thank you very much.
Well said. Okay, so is there a motion then to suspend the rules, to move to second reading?
Make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion at a second. In order to suspend the rules, it does have to be unanimous, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Okay, rules are currently suspended, we will move ordinance 2022-20 to second reading. At this time, I'll ask if there's any public comment concerning the ordinance. Okay, any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Then I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2022-20.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2022-20.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion at a second from Sierra. Further discussion? All those who say aye?